Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Township of Howell Planning Board meeting for Thursday, June 1st. Opening statement, please Eileen.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 6, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Trittown News. Second, on January 6, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 6, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Present.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Russo's been excused. Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. French?
Here.
Mr. Boyle's been excused. Deputy Mayor Nacastro's been excused. And Mayor Berger has been excused. Chairman Schneider?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, I do have correspondence. I have a letter from Mark Aikens. He is the attorney for Wen Claire. They were on the agenda this evening for submission waivers only, and he asked that we please carry this application to a future date determined by both his clients and my office. They are not ready to proceed at the moment, and that was not noticed, so it's not a problem.
So they'll just come back when they're ready, Mr. Chair, on that one?
The second letter I have is from Todd Cohen. He is the attorney for Stavola Asphalt, and he has also asked that the application for Stavola be carried until August 17th with no further notice to the public, and he has also granted an extension of time for the Planning Board to act through and including September 30, 2017.
Mr. Chair, is that acceptable? Stavola. What does that date look like?
Right now, there are two applications on that evening.
So in the application of Stavola Asphalt Company, Inc., case number SP-1031, be carried to the boards, August 17, 2017, meeting here, 7:00 at Town Hall, no further notice to property owners.
And the only other correspondence I have was an email from Mr. Alfieri, who is the attorney for 41 Randolph Road, and that application he would also like carried. We set a date of April 17, but he does have to renotice, so...
What's the new date?
There is no new date on that.
Oh.
They're going to renotice for that.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it on correspondence.
Very good. So the first order of business is a review of a submission waiver.
I've got a resolution.
No, we don't have a resolution. Review of submission waiver before the board, and that is case number SP-1036, Rosano Howell Land LLC. It's a minor site plan. It's an application of Rosano Howell Land LLC as applicant and owner seeking minor site plan approval for a maintenance facility improvements consisting of modular office building and the construction of a covered truck wash and fuel station on premises known as Block 230, lots 1 and 2, 360, on Asbury Road. Counselor?
Good evening, Chairman. Todd Cohen for the applicant Rosano Howell Land LLC. I believe the requested waivers are listed in the May 26 CME review letter in items 4A to F.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Mr. Chairman, on page 4 of our May 26 report, there are several items that are submission waivers required with this application. I think it's important to note that this is a minor site plan. It doesn't prompt stormwater management regulations. It's for roughly a 2,880 square foot modular building and then a pad for a fuel area. So given the scope of the application, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Thank you. If there's any questions from the board...
Is that, are you speaking about items, checklist items 5 and 17, or are you also talking about the 1, 2, 3, 4 additionals?
I'm speaking about them in their entirety. So checklist item 5, 17, 52, 59, 60, and 64.
If I, nothing from the board, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the submission waivers to deem the application complete.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First order of business is an application before the board, case number SP-1028, Wawa Incorporated. This is also a minor site plan. It's application of Wawa Incorporated as applicant and owner seeking a minor site plan approval. Constructed eight-foot-by-10-foot shed on an 11-foot-by-11-foot concrete pad on premises known as Block 78.10, Lot 32.02, 4690, Route 9 South. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tyler Prime on behalf of the applicant, Wawa Inc. As stated, this property is located at Block 78.10, Lot 32.02, and we are seeking to construct an eight-foot-by-10-foot shed on an 11-foot-by-11-foot concrete pad. Pretty straightforward, simple application. I can turn it over to my engineer testify. We'll have a few exhibits. I think he has two or three exhibits. We'll have those marked and proceed from there.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Matthew Sharo, S-H-A-R-O, with Dynamic Engineering.
Can you give me your qualifications, please?
Excuse me? Congratulations. Graduated from the University of Hartford with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering degree. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, qualified in multiple municipalities throughout the state. Been doing this about 12, 15 years.
I'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
We've pre-marked some exhibits, so you will be beginning with A5 tonight.
Thank you. I will start with A5, which is an aerial exhibit prepared by Dynamic Engineering dated 6/1/14.
Excuse me, Counselor, can we move that a little bit closer so we can see it?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So let me scoot around the other side of the desk here. So this is the aerial exhibit of the site. It's the Wawa store 938 located at 4690 Route 9 South. It's about a third of a mile south of here on the southbound side of Route 9. Surrounding the site to the north is an appliance center with a couple of commercial uses beyond. To the east is Route 9 with some office space and commercial uses beyond. To the south is the first aid squad as well as some commercial uses beyond, and to the west is residential neighborhood on Seminole Court. So what we're proposing here tonight, I'll introduce exhibit A6, which is basically a colored site render of what you have in front of you tonight. We also added an inset with a blow-up of the actual area of the proposed shed. So what we're proposing tonight is an 11-by-11 concrete pad that would house an eight-by-10 shed. It's a resin shed that you see from Home Depot, tan with a dark tan top. In the shed, we're proposing to have just general maintenance items for the site, including shovels, a manual sweeper, brooms, gloves, electric blower, rock salt for the winter, things of that nature. Surrounding the shed, we are proposing, from recommendation of your professionals, some arvites to screen the shed from the residential uses beyond. As far as lighting goes, there's a light, existing light, area light about five feet from the shed that lights this area now, and then the actual location of the shed is about 100 feet from the rear of the store along the westernmost curb line of the development. That's really all I have.
Just to confirm, there is no variance or design waiver relief required?
Nope. Why would you have to go forward with a shed?
Because it's a structure. They're building another structure on the site, so under our ordinance, basically, it kicks them into the site plan.
If he was a resident, we probably wouldn't be...
Why is this not covered under the conditionally exempt site plan review?
It already had one. But they already had one. You're only allowed one per property.
Our conditionally exempt site plan takes into account that you shouldn't be able to do in like five steps what you wouldn't be able to do in one, so it limits you at a certain point. So they've already reached their limit of the conditionally exempt site plans that they could have.
Because of the number of structures?
Well, because you can only come in for one. So once you've exhausted, you know, it doesn't matter. Well, yes, the structure kicked them in, and had they not had any conditionally exempt site plans previously, they probably would have been able to avail themselves of that, but...
What was the modification to their site that they went through?
I don't know.
It was the trash enclosure in the rear loading zone.
So even if they put this up against the back of the building, they still have to go through this entire process like this?
Okay. Well, I would suggest that we recommend back to council that we expand the applicability of the conditionally exempt site plan review ordinance to avoid businesses to have to come in and spend 10 times more in professional fees and renderings than the cost of what they're looking to put up. I don't know how that's a service to anybody to do this, so...
Sure, Wawa would appreciate that.
Yeah, well, it's not a Wawa issue.
A $400 shed.
I think we need to have some correspondents go back to council to revise that ordinance. This is a little ridiculous.
Yeah, I think so. If, Eileen, you can perhaps with me draft a letter to them with input from former Mayor Gatto.
Is there any?
What we would say in the letter, and I'll sign it.
Is there any other input from the professionals?
There isn't. We had two minor comments just with regard to certifications on the plans, which I'm sure there's no issue with, so no, I have nothing further.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept.
I second it.
He can open it to public.
Whatever you gotta do.
Technically, I think we have to do that.
Have we opened it to the public yet?
No.
We need to open it to the public.
Open it to the public. Is there anybody that'd like to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'm closing the public portion. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Can I just, who seconded?
I do.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Is it the easiest one you've ever made?
Next case is case number SP-10158, Landmark Plaza Management. Amended preliminary and final major site plan. Application of Landmark Plaza Management LLC as applicant and owner seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan approval to remove all existing site improvements and construct a 19,037 square foot, one-story Aldi grocery with associated parking and other site improvements on premises known as Block 73, lots 23.01, 24, and 25, 5010, 5024, US Route 9 South.
Mr. Chairman? I'll be recusing myself from this application.
Okay, so Mr. Tannenhouse has recused himself from this application. Have a nice evening, this is your...
Nick will give you the update on that. I should recuse myself. Before we get started, historically, isn't there some background on this? Isn't there an approval on this property for...
We had approved an expansion of this property for a different purpose.
Okay, and this is a completely different...
This is an amended approval to reflect what they want to do now. It's not completely different. It's just an amendment to what they previously had approved.
And if I could, just so you kind of understand, I mean, certainly they'll testify, but previously this was an L shape, and so the building configuration has changed. It's no longer an L, so as a result of those changes, they were required to come to the board for the amended site plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professionals, my name is Mark Williams with Mayor LaFrance and Williams representing your applicant landmark tonight. And am I being heard? My history with microphones is less than stellar. In any event, as indicated by Ms. Newman, we are here for amended preliminary and final site plan approval, variances and waivers as will be indicated, Woodlands Management Approval on a site located at the southwest corner of Route 9 and Lanes Mill Road. We were approved by a resolution dated December 17, 2015, about 18 months ago, and after that, as we entered the pre-leasing phase of developing the site, we received an offer from Aldi which matured into a proposal, and so we are here to take 17,000 and change square feet worth of retail and convert it to a freestanding, single-building Aldi food With me tonight, I have Mike Geller, Geller Civ. He's a project engineer. I have John Ray from McDonough and Ray. He's our traffic engineer. We have Reno Accordo, AIA, who prepared the plans for the Aldi. And we have Adrian Kilizak, who is director of real estate for this region for Aldi. Before I go any further, would you like to do some swearing of witnesses, and do we want to mark any exhibits?
Well, I think we'll take the witnesses, you know, one at a time as they're coming up, and we'll mark the exhibits as we go.
Done. Then without any further delay, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Geller, who will give you a description of the project as it exists today and address the comments of the professionals. Mike?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just want to briefly provide some qualification?
Yes, Michael Geller, G-E-L-L-E-R is my name. I'm a partner with the firm of Geller Civ and Company. I have 42 years of experience in engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. I'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. We do have exhibits tonight. The first exhibit I'd like to mark is a rendering that was used back in November of 2015 of what was approved, so the board can see what was previously approved.
Hey, we have pre-marked some exhibits, so you'll be beginning with A14.
So that'll be A14, 6/1/17. That's the previous retail building color rendering, and it was prepared today, June 1, 2017, and that represents what was approved. The second exhibit will be A15, and I'll mark a small one if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Geller, could you move that closer to the podium?
Sure. Is that better?
Yes.
The second exhibit is A15. I have handouts that are identical to what's mounted, 24 by 36. I'll mark one of the handouts, A15. And that's, you want to mark the architects exhibit? If we may, we might like to mark the architects exhibit. I may be referring to that.
Let me just see, is that something that was already submitted to the board?
It's actually a colored rendering of perspective. It's extra.
Thank you.
That is titled Exterior Elevation Renderings of the Aldi Incorporated, Howell, New Jersey, Store Number 35. It was prepared by Gaspar Accordo, and it has a date of September 15, 2016, and a issue All right, this site, as previously mentioned, what, is it okay to stand here? This site, as previously mentioned, was approved by the board in November of 2015. Resolution was adopted in December of 2015. This site is three tax lots, 23.01, 24, and 25, and Block 73. As previously stated, it's at the southwest corner of Route 9 and Lanes Mill Road. On this rendering that shows the proposed site, north is to the right, and Lanes Mill Road runs up and down, and Route 9 runs left to right. The property's a corner lot. It has an area of 2.91 acres. There's about 290 feet of frontage on Route 9 and about 429 feet of frontage on Lanes Mill Road. This property's in the HD1 highway development zone. Lot 24 currently has a one-story, multi-tenant retail building on it, 8,400 square feet, and parking. You're probably familiar with it. It's currently on septic system and public water. Lots 23 and 01 and 25 are vacant and wooded properties. The adjacent uses to this property across Lanes Mill Road is the Walmart, strike that, the Walmart site on the northwest corner of Route 9 and Lanes Mill Road. Across Route 9 is the Walgreens and Ruby Tuesday sites, and to the south of the site is an office complex known as Lanes Mill Office Plaza, and then there's a commercial site known as Lanes Mill Retail Plaza. That's a multi-tenant commercial use. And further to the south is a vacant lot upon which there's a billboard, currently a billboard. That lot is L-shaped and extends to the rear or westerly portion of the subject property. To the west of the property is, all the properties I previously described are in the HD1 highway development zone. To the west of the property are AREE2 properties, except for their flag portion of that billboard lot, which is Lot 2102. That is highway development. But to the north of that is a portion of Lot 3. It's actually a panhandle portion of the property that extends out to Kent Road. It's a 15-acre site. Close to Kent Road, about 1,000 feet away from this property, is a residential dwelling that fronts on Kent Road. And then to the immediate west, near Lanes Mill Road, is a former southerd school site, which is now the southerd community enrichment center of Howell. And that's on lots 1 and 2 immediately west of the site. So that paints a picture of where we are at. Previously approved is rendered on A14. Previously approved, we had a two-building retail shopping center that would have been occupied by as many tenants as the building was broken up to be. That consisted of an area of 9,214 square feet and 8,025 square feet. Shopping center had access off of Lanes Mill Road as well as Route 9 with right-in, right-out movements only. There was 107 parking spaces that were proposed at that time. It was permitted use in the zone. It's to be serviced by sewer and water. The septic will be abandoned, and sewer will be extended to the site or connected to the site. It's currently there. And it met all the bulk requirements of the zone, and there was a stormwater management system proposed between the buildings that eventually drained to the Route 9 drainage system. Proposed now is rendered on A15, which you have in front of you as well as on the board. That building is a proposed 19,037 square foot Aldi's food market. It's in the current HD1 zone. Food markets are permitted retail use in that zone. Right now, as before, the site would meet all the bulk requirements of the HD-1 zone as to size and dimension and setbacks. The property would be fully improved with a parking lot with 102 vehicles. Parking would be situated on the easterly portion and the northerly portion of the site. There would be, as before, exactly, a right-in, right-out access from Lanes Mill Road and a right-in, right-out access from Route 9. The Lanes Mill Road driveway is in almost the exact location as previously approved. The Route 9 driveway was shifted about 15 feet to the south to accommodate the operation and site specifics of this particular site plan. to accommodate the operation and site specifics of this particular site plan. There is a one-way circulation drive in the rear of the building that would serve as access for truck entering from Lanes Mill Road, and circulating the building, and exiting onto Route Nine, as well as garbage pickup and access to the loading zone. There is a, again, connection to public sanitary sewer in Route Nine, and connection to public water in Lanes Mill Road, proposed. And there would be a refuse management system would be ten by twenty in area, sufficient in size for refuse, recycling, and cardboard, as needed by the operator. There's landscaping proposed in accordance with the ordinance. There's street trees along both Route Nine and Lanes Mill Road, landscaping throughout the site. Lighting is proposed for the site as well. And there's one freestanding sign proposed just north of the driveway. That would be a one hundred and twenty-square-foot side ID sign. That essentially proposes what we're, shows what we're proposing. The waivers and variances that are required for this project are almost the same as what was approved previously a year and a half ago. There was a fifty-foot buffer that is required along the northerly property line, only for that portion that abuts the residential Lot Three. The length of that common boundary line is one hundred and eighty feet. And the ordinance requires under one oh eight dash sixty-three E, the provision of that fifty-foot buffer. But additionally, one oh eight, oh, one oh eight sixty-three A requires the buffer. One oh eight sixty-three E gives us standards, four different standards that have to be met. Any two of the four, it's either a landscaping, fencing, or walls at least ten feet in height, or a landscape berm at least six feet in hi, height. A building setback measured from the buffer line of two hundred feet, and/or parking area setback of a hundred feet. Our site doesn't meet any of those, basically due to the limited front, common boundary line with Lot Three. Ten feet is proposed from the boundary line to the proposed curb line of that circulation aisle in the rear of the building. The warrants for this variance are such that the common line is only one hundred and eighty feet along the driveway portion accessing the rear of the building. The, the site of Lot Three, as previously mentioned, is about fifteen acres in size. The residential aspect and dwelling of that site is about one thousand feet from the common line. And the elevations of the portion of Lot Three that abut the property is about five feet higher in elevation than the subject site. And the subject site is and will be wooded. It's part of the Lot Three. It's, it's currently a wooded site. So, the need for a buffer in that place is not evident. And although it technically abuts the subject site, the purpose and intent of providing a buffer to a residential use is really not necessary because of the awkward shape of Lot Three being panhandle in shape, and the distance of the residential dwelling from the property line. And this variance was previously requested a year and a half ago, and approved by the board at that time, seen appropriate. Granted, that variance would not be detrimental, I believe, to the character of the area or the public good, and there wouldn't be any detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. There's two design waivers that were previously also approved. That would be for the signage, that being a size of the sign on Route Nine. As I said previously, the proposed sign is one hundred and twenty square feet. The ordinance allows a maximum sign area of eighty square feet. I would point out that the prior sign for the shopping center was a hundred and forty-four square feet in area. The ordinance allows the eighty-square-foot sign. It also limits the number of signs, and we'll get to that in a moment. Actually, the larger sign does allow for the passing public to identify the site and gain access to it more readily. It's on Route Nine. It's very common, the areas are common with, and consistent with other signs along the Route Nine corridor. And again, the previously, the previous site plan was approved with a hundred and forty-four square-foot sign. Pointed out is that technically, there, as a corner lot, the site could be having two signs permitted in accordance with the ordinance, which would allow each to be eighty square feet. And the one sign at one twenty is less than two signs, which would total a hundred and sixty square feet. So, we see that as consistent in meeting the intent of the ordinance as to sign area for freestanding signs. The second sign waiver is the number of building signs. I'll refer to the architectural rendering on this one.
As you can see, there's a rendering of the elevation of the building and perspectives.
Perspectives of the building, looking from Lanes Mill Road, the Route Nine Lanes Mill corner, as well as looking from Route Nine. As you can see, there's two signs that are proposed on the building. There's the Aldi logo that everyone's pretty much familiar with. And that's on both corners of the corner feature of the building, the Aldi's logo. And then, there's the words "food market" on either side. As you can see, the way the architecture was, to differentiate, differentiate the building roof lines to give it some character, the Aldi's logo portion is higher. Then, it drops down to the portion of the facade that has the "food market" wording, and then it drops down for the remainder of the building. We think that's an interesting architectural design. The two sign, as far as the signs are concerned, the Aldi sign ends up to an area of seventy-five square feet. It's about seven foot eleven and three-eighths by nine and feet five and a half, has an area of seventy-five square feet. The food market sign is an area of thirty-eight point one square feet. It's about nineteen feet in length and two feet in height. Now, the sum of that is a hundred and thirteen square feet. The way the ordinance in Howell allows wall-mounted signs is to allow to be twenty-five percent of the facade area, which is the length of the building by the first-floor height, or a maximum of twelve feet. In those cases, those sign areas would be thirty, three hundred and sixty feet allowed on Lanes Mill Road, and four hundred and sixty feet allowed on the Route Nine frontage. And you can see that the one hundred and thirteen is well less than that. And actually, the two signs, the Aldi and food market, although they're separated, serve as one identification feature, Aldi's food market. It's not like there's a number of signs peppered all over the place. So, we feel, again, that the signage of the site is appropriate for the nature of the use. It's very typical of the signs that happen along the Route Nine corridor. And it provides for safe identification of the building and the site for the motoring public, and safe access to the site as a virtue of ability to identify where they're going. So, we're asking that the board identify and acknowledge those conditions, and approve the signage as proposed. There are also other design waivers that are requested, that are enumerated in the engineer's report. Wish I mixed up with the, here it is. Started going through the agendas. The engineer's report is dated March sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. There has been a professionals' meeting that followed that up. And on page four, they address the design waivers, page three. Well, page three starts the buffer we just addressed. Bottom of page three, the second one is B, which is the corner lot side, corner lot sign, and the area issue. Starting with three C, on page four, the engineer cites section one eighty-eight dash twenty-two. The light intensity provided at ground level shall be a minimum of zero point three-foot candles anywhere, and an average of zero point five-foot candles over the entire area. The applicant has indicated an average of two point six four-foot candles within paved areas. Proposed lighting is LED lighting. It exceeds the area. It meets the current industry standards. I think the Howell ordinance is a little out of date in this respect, and provides for a safe use of the site in a well-lit condition. So, we feel that's an appropriate waiver. It's really a technical type of thing. The second one is three D, one eighty-eight dash one oh six G, which requires all areas between the parking and building shall be landscaped. Landscape beds have not been provided along the building perimeter. Along the building perimeter is a sidewalk that's a minimum of six feet. It widens out to about thirteen and a half feet in the areas where cart storage occurs. The six feet is a little bit limiting in size to provide for landscaping in that area. The applicant is asking for relief in that regard. There is a thirty-foot aisle provided along the frontage of the building. And there are bollards proposed along wherever there's parking. And actually, along the entire frontage, there are bollards to protect any pedestrians from the motoring public.
Mike, before you go any further, where exactly are the carts? Are they on the frontage along Lanes Mill, or are they on the frontage along Route Nine?
The, the operation person could probably answer that better, but the plan indicates two areas where it's jutted out on both sides.
So, you couldn't put planters or something? I mean, a typical sidewalk's four feet wide. You couldn't put planters or something to at least attempt to comply? I understand you're not going to comply fully, but something out there would be beneficial. I mean, we have required other applicants to do something.
I know that the prior site plan for the shopping center did have planters, and I think the applicant can probably live with.
Well, first of all, parking perpendicular to Route Nine, you could have a catastrophe.
Well, they have boll, before, they have bollards and a guide rail on that, in, on those parking spaces.
In front of parking, perpendicular to Route Nine?
Yes, they, they, yes, they kept that because that was part of the approval from the prior application that we were concerned about cars kind of going out onto Route Nine. So, there's, there's a guide rail there, Mike? Is that correct?
Yes, there's a timber guide rail.
So, there's, there's definitely a blockade there, and that was carried over from the prior approval.
That's fine, so I really don't care about the planters.
There's also a five-foot difference in elevation. The site sits lower than Route Nine. So, between the site and the timber rail and the site elevation difference.
As long as a car can't go in, and how, and in front of the building.
They have bollards in front of those parking spaces, yes. So, Mike, I'm still looking for the planters. Just going to throw that out there. It doesn't have to be a ton, and you can certainly work with our office and Shari to come up with something.
Yes, we will work.
But we'd like something.
Yes, we understand that, and we'll agree to do that. Thank you.
Let me just, you know, when you talk about these planters, I find myself that in these parking lots, they have the planters, they end up growing so high that it's hard to see when you're making a turn if there's a car coming.
This is between, this is not in the parking lot. This is between the building and the parking. So, it's like on the, in the front of the store.
Okay.
I think planters are the way to go here versus any kind of landscape beds.
I agree, a hundred percent.
Shopping carts end up in the landscape beds. It's not a good situation. So, the planters, we can live with a, with a selectively placed.
So, I, I would just recommend you work with Shari to come up with something that, you know, can work.
We will do that.
Mr. Williams, is, in terms of sequence, you got another witness?
In terms of a witness, I have another witness.
I'm just asking who's talking. Everybody needs to be quiet right now. The only people talking are the ones with the mics. Or you're going to come up, be sworn in, you know, you're going to have to tell us who you are, and why we need to hear you.
I don't think that our architect's testimony is required right now in connection with this issue, so.
Well, all I'm saying is whoever's talking, we need you to do it properly.
Not a problem, I understand.
Yeah.
Mr. Geller, we kind of went past the lighting in, in a little bit of a haste there. You're proposing illumination that's basically five times the level. You cited, you know, Walmarts across the way, and Ruby Tuesdays and Walgreens is across the street. Do you know offhand what the level of illumination is?
I do not know that offhand, no.
Could you give me other examples in Howell, along the Route Nine corridor, that have such high levels of illumination?
I have not measured them, but they, if they use LED lighting, most likely they're more intense than the standards of the point three minimum and point five average. Those are sta, Mr. Tannenhaus was here, he could probably explain that. But the LED lighting gives off more efficient light, and they're able to spread it out better. And it's just my understanding that lighting levels are better. So, some of the ordinance standards may be a little bit out of date.
Well, this is average-maintained illumination, correct?
Yes.
The two point six four.
That's the average, no, that's the average over the whole site.
Yeah, average-maintained, all right. Again, with LEDs, you can also reduce the number of bulbs to bring the, the illumination levels down, right? I, I just, I'm having a hard time having something so bright right on, right on a corner of an, a signalized intersection.
Well, it may seem bright, but two point six four, although it's five times the standard of a half, it's not that bright. Ball fields are like sixty at, at the infield if you compare it. So, that's the lighting you get on a ball field.
Right, and that's why I asked you if you could cite me some examples.
You know, I couldn't. If I knew I was going to get the question, I would have prepared better and maybe got it, had an answer for you. But I'm sure there's other sites that have that type of lighting, if they're new, and LED-type lighting.
Not if it's been approved by this board in a while.
If I can interrupt, another applicant had called asking, with this type of situation, what else had been approved? And actually, a lot of sites that are on Nine are between like one and a half to two and a half-foot candles. The ordinance is really low. Doing my own reviews, not even looking at the ordinance, I would ask for a minimum of point five, that I would require that they do, at least a, a minimum of point five. So, this is asking for point three. So, it's, it's really not possible to do a minimum, you know, to hit those standards. So, the minimum of point five is a, is a IES stan, standard. It's Illuminating Engineers Society standard. So, the ordinance is technically too low. It's, it's not safe to have it that low.
I, I have no problem with what you said, but the problem is, is that we're going so bright, all right? And, you know, if we're talking about two and a half-foot candles, we're probably talking about something underneath the canopy of the Wawa gas station?
No, that's a lot higher.
That's a lot higher?
Yeah, like fifteen or, yeah, a lot higher. Yeah, it's, 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 two and a half is not as much as you think it is.
So, the professionals are comfortable with this level?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. The next ordinance, design waiver, is three E on page four, if you're following along. Section one eighty-eight dash two twenty-five H four is a community design standard that requires that retaining wall shall be ten feet from swale area. A six-foot-wide stone swale area abuts the rear line. That swale area is along the northerly line. Takes the wa, drainage off of the slope that I previously described to the properties to our west, and conveys it to the storm system that eventually drains to the basin and then Route Nine. We're asking for that to be a six-foot-wide stone swale area, and the proposed retaining wall along the westerly side property line. So, there's not ten feet from, there's not ten feet separation that's provided, and that's driven by partly the buffer variance we're asking for, and the unique topographic condition of the elevation difference between the adjacent property and how rapidly it falls towards our site. That, again, was a waiver that was previously granted. That's the exact same condition that existed eighteen months ago when the prior site plan was approved. We're asking for the board to consider that. The last waiver, in F three F, is section one eighty-eight dash two twenty-six B. It has to do with commercial parking areas and/or driveways shall be located a minimum of fifty feet from any side or rear property line, which abuts a residential use. The site access drive from Lanes Mill Road and the loading area access drive along, well, it's not building, along the rear of the building is ten feet from the adjoining Lot Three. Again, that's that Lot Three short distance. The actual driveway is ten feet off of that line. It can't meet that fifty-foot standard, only because of the conditions I previously described for the request of that buffer variance. And again, that was previously granted with the site plan eighteen months ago. We talked about it then, so we request that relief. Under three G, section one oh eight dash one oh seven C, this retail use requires parking at the rate of one per one hundred and fifty square feet, and resulting in one hundred and twenty-seven spaces required. The nineteen thousand thirty-seven-square-foot supermarket is proposing one hundred and two spaces. Now, that is a deviation of twenty-five spaces. Aldi's require, their model for this size store is to require eighty-five stalls. So, it's actually seventeen greater than that. The, so, we feel that the parking is adequate for the specific use that's proposed. And they have a history of their sites. They know basically what they use. We're asking for that waiver relief.
I have a question, Mr. Geller. The, is this the same size as the Aldi that's on Nine? The, is this the same size as the Aldi that's on Nine now?
You know, I couldn't answer that. Maybe the operator's going to be testifying, Adrienne, she could answer that. So, thank you.
Can we have some testimony provided in the record later on to support the 102 based upon what Mr. Geller has represented, that only eighty-some-odd spaces is required?
Are you talking about the waiver request for supplying the 102?
Yeah.
Sure. It's not a variance yet.
So you'll have testimony provided on that?
Sure.
Okay.
It may be because it's greater than 20% technically a variance, Jennifer, so it could be a variance versus a waiver. Between the operator and Mr. Ray, they can address that a little bit more detail. The other waivers that are requested are architectural waivers, and I'll put the architect's rendering on. He could really address them better than I, but I just wanted to get the planning testimony finished here. And the first is in number 3H. Roofline offsets shall be provided along any roof measuring longer than 75 in length. No roofline offsets are provided along portions of the east front and west rear facades of the building. Actually, that's true. The south, you really can't see it in the rendering, but in the architectural plan you have, there's, the roof offsets are really in the front, eastern, actually, it is provided in the east elevation, and it is provided in the north elevation abutting Lanes Mill Road. So we just feel that based on the way that the architectural look of the building, the intent of the ordinance is met with the break in the roof lines. The south abuts a commercial site, and the rear is up to a wooded area with an elevation difference, but the architect can talk about the architectural amenities a little bit better than I, but we are asking for that relief. And the last one is with facades over 50 feet in length shall incorporate wall projections or recesses a minimum of three-foot depth and shall extend 10% of the facade. No recesses or projections are provided along the south and west facades of the building. Actually, the architectural plans that were submitted with the application show architectural features that were, this was actually submitted as part of the application. Again, the architect can answer that, but the entire perimeter has 25-foot, spaced at 25? They have the pilasters that are eight inches away from the building to give it some relief and some color difference as shown in the elevations. You can see the break in the brick. That's actually an eight-inch shutout from the building, and that's intended to meet that standard of the ordinance, to provide that.
Well, Mike, the standard's three, it's not eight inches, it's three feet, right?
Yeah, we're asking for relief from the three feet.
I mean, I would, and we talked about this at the professionals' meeting, this is something that this board has not really been inclined to grant. We have required renovations of existing buildings to come up with alternative architectural facades to meet this requirement. You have 150-some-odd-foot-long wall, it needs to, I cannot support the granting of that waiver. That needs to be fixed.
Well, I would let the architect address that as far as what an alternative to meeting that standard, and he'll be up in a minute. That concludes my addressing of the variances and waivers. I'm on, I'm answering the engineer's report now on page six. Number six, the applicant should prepare to discuss the following issues. Six A is operations. The representative from Aldi's will address that in detail. B is the ability of large-wheel-based vehicles. Emergency refuse to circulate the site includes to and from the loading area should be reviewed with the board. We note that a turning radius plan has been provided and should be reviewed with the board. We did submit that plan as I previously described. I didn't render that plan, but it's submitted in your set. The plan shows access to the site that trucks will be directed, that delivery trucks, to enter the site from Lanes Mill Road, and it shows that it's an ability to circulate the site in a counterclockwise direction around the rear of the building and the southerly side of the building, access the loading area, and exit the site onto Route Nine South. That is the way that the circulation will work.
So, Mr. Geller, all right, first of all, that access that you have going into the site is a right turn in, right turn out, so that means that your larger wheel-based vehicles would have to be coming from a residential area to access this site, okay? I'm not comfortable with that.
Well.
And second, I would like to know what is the wheel-based, size wheel-based vehicle
It was prepared for a WB67, which is a very large wheelbase tractor-trailer.
Yes, I agree. The largest ones permitted. But what about the issue about the fact that, why can't we accommodate trucks turning in off of Route Nine? Why can't we keep the commercial traffic on the commercial car radar rather than running it through a residential area?
Well, we didn't look at that from a WB67 viewpoint. It could be difficult. We'd have to take a look at that, actually. Listen, you look at that, John? We'd have to look at that.
I don't know how the board feels about that, but that seems a common sense, is that we keep the trucks on Route Nine.
Mike, I just want to make sure. Did I understood what you just said? That for the largest wheel-based truck, you, there is or there's not an issue about ingressing and egressing onto the side street? Or you had, is that what you said you haven't looked at?
No, no, we haven't looked at using Route Nine to circulate through the site in a direction I'm pointing to now, which would be accessing Route Nine driveway in, coming in in front of the building, circulating around the building, and then out to Route Nine again.
Okay.
What we have looked at is coming in from Lanes Mill Road, providing the proper radius, and then more easily circulating around the site. I would point out there's a lot of, there's commercial development on the Kent Road portion from Route Nine South to Lanes Mill Road. The easterly side is a lot of, predominantly, commercial. It's the backs of commercial properties.
Aren't there tractor-trailers coming into Walmart from, on Lanes Mill Road? I mean, I don't see any difference.
Yes, that's true. I do believe the tractor-trailers from Walmart.
I don't believe they come in from Lanes Mill Road.
There's a lot of truck traffic on Kent Road behind Walmart coming all over Route Nine.
Well, Mr. Geller, if you simply reversed the direction, if you had, rather than the trucks coming in from Lanes Mill Road, if you had the trucks coming in from Nine and then exiting out to Lanes Mill Road, that would solve the problem.
Well, it doesn't fit the different, we looked at many different machinations of the Aldi's layout, and it just wasn't working doing it that way. I hear what you're saying, Mr. Nash, but it worked best in a counterclockwise direction, and the trucks would have to be directed to use Kent Road from Route Nine to Lanes Mill and enter the site that way.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. So, once the trucks get into the site, they're going to actually have to pull forward to back into the loading dock?
Well, that's typical of anything, but any truck would need to come counterclockwise around the back, back in for loading, and then exit onto Nine. Now, again, Kent Road has a commercial flavor to it, the easterly side of Kent Road, and I'd ask the board to consider that.
So, Mr. Chairman, is this the appropriate time with Mr. Geller to have conversations about the buffer, because that was a very extensive conversation based on the prior approval, which I think we need to revisit again? Is this the appropriate time to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So if memory serves me correct, we spent the better part of the entire evening talking about that buffer. There were all sorts of issues that were talked about with the previous occupancies, about pedestrian traffic going from the previously proposed occupancies over to the school, what that adjacent property was going to look like. I think the only thing that I've heard as part of your testimony was that because it was previously approved, we should consider that again now. I'm not sure that's the case. I think an approval from 2015, particularly with the changes that have occurred in this area and some other things that are likely to change in the near future for this area, I think we would like to hear a little bit more about why you're suggesting that we should consider that variance.
Okay, but I have, I never remember anything about cross pedestrian, cross access.
Well, there was an extensive conversation about it, and it also had conversations to do with a school being back there, which at the time was not considered to be a school. Yeah, there was a lot of conversation about it.
There was a lot of conversation about the minimum distance between an alcohol sales establishment and a school, and we were actually wondering where, if we rented out to a liquor store, which store it would be in so that it made the minimum distance.
I remember that.
I remember that as being the discussion of pedestrian traffic.
No, I remember there being conversations about additional parking being used on the easterly side of the southern school, which I was going to get to eventually. If your 20 parking spaces less than what we require, I'm waiting for you to tell me why people wouldn't just park over at the southern school and walk across again, which is why I'm asking you about the buffer. But I was waiting for you to explain that. I haven't heard anything convincing as to why we should consider granting that variance. I'm waiting for you to tell me what your reason is.
We gave that, okay, there is about 500 feet of property line that's common with the entire westerly portion of this site, counting from Lanes Mill Road to the southwestern corner.
And you said that's a wooded area currently, right?
Yes, that area is currently wooded. Lot Three encompasses about 180 of that 500 feet, so represents relatively small portion. We want the board to consider that Lot Three, I can only refer you to the cover sheet of the plans, if you have them, is an L-shaped piece, is a panhandle portion of a tax lot that extends all the way out to Kent Road south of Lanes Mill. As such, the residential portion is over, and it's a 15-acre site, the residential portion of that site to which you're looking to do the buffer is the residential aspect, is the dwelling is about 1,000 feet away, so there's a distance.
Today.
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 Yeah.
Right, and I'm concerned about what the area's going to look like in the future, so I understand that you're taking advantage of the natural separation and the trees, but I'm not convinced that those trees are going to be there in the next five years, so.
And topographically, there's a five-foot elevation difference in that, and the width of that particular lot in that area, just give me a second. The width of that lot in that area is about 75 feet. That's the width of the panhandle that comes out, so it's a narrow, narrow piece of property.
That's assuming that it stays as only one lot and there isn't a future development that takes place back there, so.
Remember, this lot is a commercial lot.
I'm aware of that.
Different zone, and it has an L shape that comes around the Route Nine.
I understand. Can you explain why you can't provide the buffer?
To provide a 50-foot buffer would mean jutting into the property, moving the proposed access closer, it's just difficult to encompass.
You can't fit the building?
Can't fit, well, can't fit this building or what was prior approved.
Okay.
There's a current, there's a previous approval that.
I understand, I think I already made my comment about what was previously approved two years ago. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, can I ask, bring this a little further? The, you're actually removing the existing buildings, is that correct?
Yes.
So the question is, is the back portion of the new proposed building as far back as the building was?
Oh, it's further back than the existing building is.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that is. It doesn't violate any setbacks, and it's in a portion of the site where it's 35 feet to the rear of the building, I believe 25 is, twenty, two times the building height or 25 feet is required.
And that was my point, is you made reference to something that was approved two years ago, but it was a significantly different occupancy. The layout was different. It was a 9,000-square-foot building and an 8,000-square-foot building, and this is a 17,000-square-foot supermarket, so I don't, I don't draw any similarity between what was approved previously and what would be approved now. And the only thing I'm hearing as to why you can't provide the buffer is because your building won't fit, so I'm giving you every opportunity to provide some explanation.
Well, I mean, the testimony was pretty much the same scenario. It's a 19,000-foot Aldi's versus a 17,000-square-foot retail shop. Mr. Ray can address the traffic aspects of how intense that development is, one compared to the other.
But the traffic isn't a buffer issue. We're talking about a separation of land. I don't know why you would be referring to a traffic study for why buffers need.
Well, Mr. Geller, just before you answer it, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure Mr. Geller's thought about this completely in that respect, nor has he had an opportunity to talk to his clients. I don't, Mr. Williams, do you want to take like a recess, a brief recess to?
I would like it. I know I have an opinion back there.
Yeah, so I think they may need to regroup Mr. Chair to properly address, you know, a very legitimate question that former Mayor Gatto has.
We'll take a 10-minute break. The meeting will reconvene.
The planning board will now reconvene.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've just recessed for maybe slightly more than 10 minutes to consider the issue posed by Mayor Gatto in connection with the buffer between our lot and the 15-acre residential ARE2 lot to the west. And Mr. Geller will now continue in response.
Mr. Chair, what exhibit are we up to?
A17. We are, I believe, at A17. I searched in my file and found the tax map sheet that depicts the lot in question, Lot Three in Block 73. It's shown on sheet 3.13 of the Halle Township Tax Map, and I've taken the liberty of outlining in yellow the shape of that lot. I'd like to pass that around. I'm sorry I don't have it rendered, but it does show the panhandle portion of that lot that I'm speaking of, and the impracticality of that being developed for residential purposes.
Mr. Geller, I just missed the beginning. That's the tax map, is that what you said you have?
Yes, the Halle Township Tax Map, sheet 3.13, and that's A17, you said?
Yes, but it's a color, color, or you.
I've outlined the Lot Three, the subject lot to which the buffer is being requested. The purpose of that rendering was to show the shape of that lot, and I think Mr. Gatto had asked me the likelihood of that being developed residentially or what might happen in the future. Of course, I don't have a crystal ball to predict what might happen lot consolidation-wise, but I previously testified that the common zone boundary follows the westerly line of Lot 2102, which is the L-shaped lot I previously described that has the billboard on Route Nine, and then follows that lot to the westerly line of this property, the subject site. Considering that, of course, any residential use or any development of that area would be subject to a site plan approval, but specifically Lot Three, which is the 15, actually on the tax map, it's 15.44 acres, is in the ARV2 zone, and on the tax map, it's 15.44 acres, is in the ARV2 zone, and the side setbacks, as I recall, and this is from memory, is 50 feet, I'm not sure if you're professionals, but on a 75-foot lot, wide lot, there's clearly no ability to put any building or anything really in that area to which a buffer would serve any purpose. That part of the property would either go to open space or non-developed use, just by the nature of its shape and awkward, there's no frontage on Lanes Mill Road, because it abuts the common property line only with the subject site, and then abuts the common line with the southern enrichment center. So having said that, coupled with the fact of the limited frontage and adjacent, strike that, limited common lot line with the subject property of only 180 feet, being that that's only in the area of the driveway, it's really not in the area of the building, coupled with the elevation difference between the two properties, and frankly, I understand that it's a different application now than it was 18 months ago, but for the shopping center, which was about equal in size, equal in land disturbance, and similar in use to a shopping center, to a food market, I would offer that that, the reasonableness of approving the buffer variance in that area, the board can find those warrants, and I'll rest what I have to say.
Mr. Chair, I would take no exception to the testimony provided. I do agree that the lot is unusually shaped, Lot 3. It extends out to Kent Road, correct?
Yes.
It is very unlikely that that panhandle portion would be used for development because it's quite honestly not wide enough, and you wouldn't be able to get back there. And it is a limited portion of their rear lot line. It's basically half of their rear lot line, and it ends by the building, it ends before you get to the building. So you're really looking at the retaining wall, some landscaping, the swale that's back there, and circulation, which I think is improved from the prior application. So I would take no exception to the continuation of the relief that was previously issued.
Thank you, Jennifer, I totally agree with you.
I just want to finish up going through the engineer's report, we get our other witnesses on and be done. Item 6C on Page 6 of the CME letter of March 16, 2007, asks whether any outdoor display areas are proposed. The answer to that is no. D, employee access from the building to the refuse enclosure. The applicant does agree to add a sidewalk. There are stairs that come down from the portion of the building to the loading zone. The building is up at the higher elevation, there will be a sidewalk provided to the refuse enclosure to address that comment. Under 6E, the need for any safety barrier along the retaining wall at the loading area. The architectural plans do depict, and will revise the same thing on our site plan, that that retaining wall will have a rail on the top of it. On 6F, the ability to construct the proposed drainage pipe along the south and west property lines without the need for any easement, either temporary or permanent from adjoining properties. The pipe is close to the property line, it will be constructed on the property if shoring or bracing of any kind is needed. That will be done so that easement is not necessary, but the pipe can be constructed. It is relatively deep, but shoring would be the answer as to how that could be constructed. G.
Mr. Geller, just to go back to the rail, I just want to specify for purposes of the resolution, the height of the rail that's going to be on the retaining wall. I think generally speaking, the board does four feet on top of the retaining wall, is that a problem?
The board does what?
Typically, it's like a four-foot rail on top of the retaining wall that we've had in other applications. Is that about what you were thinking here?
Yes, it could be a four-foot rail.
Okay.
To continue, 6G is whether any awning, window, banner, et cetera, signs are anticipated and subsequent compliance with Ordinance Section 256. I don't believe any of those features as far as awnings, window, banners, or signs that are, I don't believe any of that's proposed, but the operator could probably address that better, but I don't believe that is proposed at all. And 6H is the need for any improvements. Curb widening right-of-way dedication along either of the roadway site frontages should be discussed with the board. We note public sidewalk is proposed along each roadway frontage. Our offer, our office defers comment regarding Route 9 to the DOT. There is a sidewalk proposed along the frontage of the property for its entire length, along Lanes Mill Road and Route 9. The frontages, as you all are aware, those roads are recently improved, there's many turning lanes, the curb is, and roadway has been already improved, there's no need for further improvements for this site. As far as the outside agencies on number seven, Monmouth County Planning Board has been, approval was received on May 12, 2017. The Board of Health issued a letter dated March 21, 2017, and we agreed to all their conditions. It basically has to do with the, they note that the facility is served by public sewer and water. They note that the existing septic tank and seepage pits must be properly abandoned, and that they will do that. Detailed floor plans must be submitted and approved by this office prior to building permit being issued, that will be done as well.
Mr. Geller, I think just for our purposes, are any of these outside agency approvals that you received, does it in any way change the plan that was submitted in terms of, you know, the location of buildings or any of the improvements?
There's only one change, and that would be the width of the driveway. The fire company asked that to be increased to 20 feet, and the applicant does agree to increase the driveway along the rear, the one-way circulation drive to the west and south of the building to a width of 20 feet as requested by the Fire Bureau. There's one other item, there's a requirement for an NJDB letter of interpretation. This site is not impacted by wetlands. I do have an exhibit I can submit, but that was, I hate to say this, but it was approved last time for the prior site plan.
I think, why don't you submit it, but, you know, unless anyone has a specific question on it, I think we can move on from it.
Yeah, there's a, the New Jersey GeoWeb, it's a.
So that'll be A18.
Copy of the site, that'll be A18.
Okay.
What's the date of that? Was that study dated?
It's EEP data.
It's a living document, it's changed as needed, I just downloaded it today.
Doesn't have a revision date on it?
No, they don't usually date it, no. But they're usually fairly current. I mean, as far as wetlands, they're current. That's A18? Yes. Do you want to see it, or? All the technical comments. All the technical comments in the CME report, they have a separate section called Technical Engineering Review Number One. We agree to provide everything that the engineer has requested as far as plan changes, supporting documents and things like that. And lastly, the Environmental Commission rendered a review. They had major concerns about the traffic, but it's a write-in, write-out only, the traffic engineer will address that, and the former septic field that they request is being buried on-site in accordance with state, county, and local code. We addressed the Fire Bureau's report, and the Farmers Advisory talked about the buffer, which we addressed, and the Mr. Snyder issued a report from the DPW about the recycling plan being satisfactory. And that's it.
Questions for Mr. Geller?
I guess a question for the professionals as well. In association with local code for septic, it allows to bury septic spoils on-site on a commercial property?
Okay.
That's a question. I mean, because it's shown on the map that when they're decommissioning the septic, there's an area on the property that they're burying excavated septic system material. What's the rationale of not just hauling it off-site to an approved facility?
Well, no, it's, first of all, the tanks are required to be pumped dry. The materials that comprise the disposal field is no longer containing anything hazardous. It's a matter of disposing of the distribution lines, the distribution box, the tanks are allowed to be disposed of on-site. It's a code that's been in existence, it's done all the time, and the Health Department control governs that, they regulate that, and it's a permitted activity. It saves you from filling up the landfill with things that could be disposed of in unused open space areas of the site.
I can assure you that the Monmouth County Health Department requirements are complete there.
Thank you.
So I take it there are no further questions for Mr. Geller at this time?
Right. Do we want to open it up to the public at this time, or at the end, just for everybody?
I think we can open to the public. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to ask any questions? Please come up now.
Regarding the engineer, just got an engineer.
Regarding the testimony of the engineer. Saying no, not close the public portion. Give your next witness.
Good evening, my name is.
Just before you do that, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, now if you could state and spell your name.
My name is Gaspare Accordo, G.A.S.P.A.R.E.A.C.C.O.R.D.O. Reno is my nickname, that's why I was introduced as Reno before. I am a licensed architect in New Jersey, and I am the project, the architect of record for this project.
And just give us a little bit on your professional background.
Yes, I've been licensed since 1990, I hold about 30 different licenses, and I work on Aldi projects throughout the United States. I have about 30-some years of experience in these sorts of matters as well.
Accept your conditions.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Geller, your excellent job describing our building, there isn't really much that I can say about it, but I wanted to add this, as architects, we use different methods and ways of dealing with the way a building looks, with the aesthetics of a building. So we can use recesses in the building as well as fenestrations, as well as items that are added to the building to add interest in the way a building looks. In our case, we have used, and I'm pointing to exhibit, I think, which one was this, 14?
A16.
A16?
A16.
A16. In this case, we've used canopies, we used fenestrations, we've used, and it's hard to see from a distance, we've used sun shading, aluminum sun shading materials above the windows, we've used different types of masonry, we have a water table which is a CMU, we have a water table trim, they use cast-in-place concrete and brick masonry veneer throughout the building. We also have different elevations on the entrances, which identifies clearly where the entrance of the building is. So in my mind, as an architect, I believe that we meet the intent of the ordinance, even though we don't have three-foot setbacks, three-foot extensions on the pilesters, we still meet their intention because as the aesthetics of the building show, we are breaking the extent of the elevations. So it's not a blank brick wall that you look at blindly. In addition to that, the use of the windows on both of the main roads would actually highlight the building entrances, the way the building looks, with the celebration of the entry canopies on both sides.
Mr. Chair, I just would say, you know, the board, many of you were up there when we had the Mavis Tire application come before us, that was an existing building with garage bays in the front, and we made them change the architecture on the front to come in line more with our ordinance. I can appreciate what the applicant's proposing here, however, it's not enough. The blank walls, it's just blank brick, and it's just, we have an ordinance here that requires it every, for lengths over 50 feet. So even if you take the entrance out, you have expansive blank walls that, looking at this rendering, which is up there on the TV for everyone to see, I can't see that. Number one, it's too shiny, so it's reflected, I can't see anything on that paper, and it's too far away. But the bottom line is, is that you're going to need to do something more on this facade for it to, I understand the issues. For a store like this, you have shelving, and there's issues internally that create a problem in making massive bumpouts of three feet. I understand that. But material changes can be done, it looks like a blank wall of brick, and we have consistently not accepted that here.
Would the addition.
Before you go forth, I am looking at the plan as shown on the monitor.
Yep.
And what Jen is talking about is it looks like you have this great big brick wall without change. The thing that does not show on the black and white, but does show on the color, is all the vertical breakup that we have in that brick. It's just not on that map. If I were looking on that map, I'd think I had a 100-foot wall full of brick. It doesn't show. It's actually inaccurate.
In addition to that, this is a flat view of the building, which you would never in real life perceive a building the way it's projected on the ground.
I can appreciate it, I can. It's still not enough. You need to do more to change that blank facade. We have consistently required architects, and we have carried applications for this very reason, so we have consistently required architects to come up with improved facades because we're tired of the blank walls. So I, you know, I can appreciate that, and I do see the vertical lines here, but it's not enough. They're here, but it's not enough.
We do have some suggestions.
The whole purpose of the bumpout is to make the facade look more interesting, but what you've done is just not enough.
We do have some suggestions, if we may. Would the additional windows on Route 9 side make their intent work?
I mean, Mr. Chair, I would feel very comfortable, as we have in the past, if the board is comfortable deferring this to our office, because we have dealt with this in the past, which has not required an applicant to have to come back before you for architectural approval, just because I think it's something that we can solve, whether it's color or material, and still maintain the functionality of the building on the inside, because I understand that it's not a restaurant, it's, it requires that shelving, so you can't have massive changes. I think I had this one other time with a pharmacy. But I would feel very comfortable, if the board is comfortable, dealing with the applicant's professionals and coming up with the facade based upon what you have approved here in the past, to come up with a facade that will work.
Mr. Chair, I'm not comfortable with that. The applicant is asking for a waiver from us. We're the ones that should be convinced of what they're putting there, not our professionals. We're the one voting on it.
You started to mention, sir, about putting windows on the Route 9 side.
Yes, we would be willing to do that, to match what's on the other side with the same window shading over the window, which would add more interest to the facade.
Correct.
So the Route 9 elevation will match the Lanes Mill Road elevation?
Correct.
I think that's.
Actually, more, a little more windows. These windows would be opaque, they cannot be clear because of detrimental to the storage of food, you cannot.
Understandable.
With the aluminum overhangs as well?
Yeah, aluminum overhang, aluminum windows that match, yes.
Thank you.
That would be good.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I didn't get all that, so as modified, what's the proposal currently?
We would be willing to add windows to match.
Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So on, so there'll be windows on both frontages?
Windows and window shades.
I think if the facades that face the street, my professional opinion is that that meets the intent, but I would defer to you.
Right. So that means they still need relief?
Correct, they still need relief, because the other facades are longer than fifty feet, but because it's a rear facade facing woods, I would take no exception to that, and the side facade faces another commercial development, so I think as long as the street frontages have that treatment, I think that, you know, and you're not compromising the functionality of the building.
I agree. So then, just so I'm clear, the two facade, the two frontages that have the windows would comply, it's the two other ones that would...
Correct.
Okay.
And really, the side elevation with the loading dock is, it's close to compliance because the loading dock actually jacks out from the building, and then you have the retaining wall with the railing, so it's, it is a difference in planes. It's just pretty much the backside that nobody will ever see anyway.
I have nothing else, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anybody have any other questions? I'll open up to the public this, if you have anybody, you have any questions for our architect. Sign up, close the public portion.
Thank you.
Next witness, you have another witness.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
John Ray, REA.
Mr. Ray, before we go, could you tell us a little bit about your experience as a traffic engineer?
I haven't been to Howell in a while, my partner Scott Kennel has been here a lot, so, my name is John Ray, I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, I'm a licensed professional engineer, I have an undergraduate degree in civil engineering, master's degree in transportation engineering, been doing this for forty-two years, licensed professional engineer, like I've said, since nineteen seventy-nine.
Thank you, accept your question.
And I've been to Howell Township before, but, like I said, not for a while.
Mr. Ray, I'd like initially to have you address the parking waiver we seek.
Sure.
The ordinance, Howell's ordinance, requires a space for every one hundred and fifty square feet in retail zone. This works out to one hundred and twenty-seven spots for this project. The plan calls for one hundred and two spots, or twenty-five less than is required by the ordinance, and we're asking for a waiver for that reason, and that's what I'd like you to address.
Correct. Okay, let me attempt that. The most commonly used, based on my experience, the most commonly used parking ratio for a food market or a supermarket is one parking space for every two hundred square feet. That's the most commonly used ratio. That also works out to five spaces per thousand square feet, if you do the math in reverse. We have a ratio of five point four spaces per thousand square feet, so it's in excess of what is commonly used for a food market or a supermarket. I also went to the last edition, the latest edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, to see what they recommend for supermarket parking, and essentially, they confirmed the five space per thousand square foot ratio. They actually report that the eighty-fifth percentile peak parking ratio, from the data that they've looked at, comes out to five parking spaces per thousand square feet, which would mean we would need ninety-five spaces, we've got one oh two. And the eighty-fifth percentile peak parking ratio, the eighty-fifth percentile means that of the data that they've collected, eighty-five percent of the data points fall at or below five spaces per thousand square feet. So it's a commonly used design parameter. I'm not telling you your ordinance is wrong for retail, but in this particular case, I can comfortably say that the one hundred and two parking spaces that are provided for the Aldis will be more than enough. On top of the ITE data, and again, based on my experience, we've done some parking observations at Aldis, at the one here on the northbound side of Route Nine and Howell down by Alexander Avenue. I've also looked at the one on Route Thirty-five in Neptune, I happen to live close to that site, I pass it all the time on Saturdays, and I can tell you that the parking ratios that they actually experienced at an Aldis are probably in the three to four parking space per thousand square foot range. So the one, the one hundred and two spaces that are provided will absolutely, in my opinion, be more than adequate to service this facility.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. Ray.
Sure.
How does this store compare in size to the one existing on Route Nine that you just mentioned by Alexander Avenue?
We have an operations person from Aldis, but I think this is bigger. Adrian, is that, this store is bigger, this is nineteen thousand, I think the other ones probably around thirteen or so, thirteen thousand? Seventeen thousand, okay.
Is the ratio of parking in that store the same as in this store?
Does anybody know how many parking spaces are in that lot? I know I pass it all the time, and the lot is less than half-full all the time.
Well, that's what I've noticed, so, that's why I was asking if they're comparable.
I, well, to give you an example, I stopped there this evening before I came to the meeting, it was a little bit before seven o'clock, there were twenty cars in the parking lot, so, seems to me like there's never more than forty or fifty cars in the parking lot at any time.
I'll agree with that.
Yeah.
I thought they were fairly large.
And I guess that's all Mr. Williams wants me to do, so...
No, I want you to stand there, in case anyone else has any questions.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Kennel said nice things about you.
Oh, thank you. So you're familiar with the traffic study that...
Yes.
...was prepared? Call your attention to the table trip generation comparison, existing versus proposed. Now, you use the ITE rate to generate what the existing traffic is.
Correct.
Have you been out at that location, the existing location?
Yes.
During PM peak and the Saturday peak?
Yes.
Does that site generate one hundred and thirteen trips?
Absolutely not.
Right.
But this is what DOT makes us use, as you well know.
So, this is under representing what the impact of your proposed facilities...
I wouldn't characterize it that way, Mr. Nash, because, couple of items, number one, you're in the same line of work as I am, so you know that I'm following DOT protocol, this is the way I have to do the trip generation table when we're applying for a permit, so this is the DOT protocol. That would be the first thing. The second item would be, again, it's been my experience, particularly with the Aldis, if we're gonna look at the site-specific uses that are in the existing shopping center building, and look specifically at Aldis, instead of using a generic ITE rate for a supermarket, my expectation is that the rate for the Aldis will be somewhat less than the generic IT rate for a supermarket.
So you're seeing the trade-off between the two?
Yeah, I think it'd be about the same, yeah.
Okay, all right, I can accept that. One of the things that I'm concerned about is not the analysis of the signalized intersection, but I'm concerned about the southbound jug handle, where it accesses onto Lanes Mill Road. With the BJ's development, there's considerable increase in the volume of, on that jug, on that jug handle, and according to your existing condition table here, or figure I should say, you've got in the PM one hundred and fifty-seven left, and in the Saturday peak you've got two hundred and thirty-three lefts. You didn't do a level service analysis, and my concern is, is that, that, well, I can tell you that that jug handle backs up during both the peak hours, Saturday and Friday.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Right, and I'm concerned about what the impact, I bet you're not increasing it that much.
Well, we're not increasing, we're not increasing it at all, because nobody coming to the Aldis would use that jug handle.
No, I'm talking about the fact that you'll have traffic coming out of your development, running right onto Lanes Mill Road, which is putting further traffic on the through movement, right?
Let me try to address that as best as I can. We did the traffic study for the Greenleaf Center, which at that point in time, I think, was called the Tropicana Center, and when we did our traffic study, one of the things we found, and we convinced our client that they had to pay for, was the traffic signal at Kent Road and Lanes Mill Road, because we know that a lot of the local people use Kent Road more or less as a de facto southbound jug handle, exactly because of the conditions you're describing at the real jug handle coming from southbound Route Nine. Everybody knows it's a difficult left turn to make, and based on our traffic counts, when we did the study for Greenleaf, we saw that what apparently was happening was a lot of people were using Kent Road as a de facto jug handle, and that's why we signaledized the intersection, we put a left turn lane in, so we tried to address that issue by making those improvements, so that the people that used Kent Road would at least have a safe means of making the left turn and heading back towards Route Nine. The other thing that we did do was, we tried to place a little bit more emphasis for southbound Route Nine traffic on using the Estelle Lane jug handle to do a U-turn if they were coming back to go to one of the stores on the east side of Route Nine. And I did notice the other day that apparently the DOT did put a sign up indicating the southbound Route Nine traffic, that if they wanted to get to the east side of Route Nine to any of the stores in the Greenleaf Center, I guess in particular, that they could bypass the jug handle and go down and do the U-turn at Estelle Lane. The DOT did put that sign up, so, I agree with everything you've said, that jug handle has been a problem from day one, when it was first constructed, it's too close to the intersection, the stacking extends beyond the jug handle, we're aware of that situation, we've tried to address it in our traffic studies. Quite frankly, the Aldis, yes, it's gonna add a little bit more traffic to the eastbound Lanes Mill Road approach, it's not a lot more you can do there, you've already got a five-lane approach. You got a double left, two throes, and a right turn lane, it's not, not a lot more you can do, Mr. Nash, that's, it is what it is.
Yeah, I concur with you, but it's your professional opinion that the additional traffic that will be generated by this development will not adversely impact that.
Well, I guess you could always make a case that one car would adversely impact it, but I just wanna look at the site-generated traffic flow, and we're talking about ten additional trips during the afternoon peak hour, and four new trips for the Saturday peak hour, so we're talking about, you know, one car every five or six minutes. I don't think it'll be significant enough that the average person will be able to tell, aha, there's an Aldis on the corner, they've increased the traffic flow, but there will be additional traffic.
You hope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public? Any more questions? Anybody from the public have any questions for the traffic engineer? Seeing none, close the public portion. Your last witness is your operations?
That's true.
Thank you.
Adrian Kielizak.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure, Adrian Kielizak, K.I.E.L.I., S is in Sam, Z.A.K.
Could you give the board your experience with Aldi?
Sure, good evening, everyone, thanks for having us here. I'm currently the director of real estate for Aldi, my territory covers Delaware, eastern Pennsylvania, including Philadelphia, and southern and central New Jersey. I work out of the Allentown, Pennsylvania office, I've been an employee of Aldi for ten years, six years was in operations as a district manager, and the last four has been in real estate as a director. Part of my role is overseeing the location and negotiation of new sites, and then I also oversee construction right to the last day when we turn over the keys to operations and they're ready to open the store, so, I'm sorry to finish.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Since we left off with Mr. Ray concerning the parking issue among others, you heard that testimony, did you not?
I did.
What is your opinion about the adequacy of our one hundred and two-space proposed parking lot to handle this particular model of an Aldi?
So my opinion is the testimony of Mr. Ray was correct, our corporate requirement is eighty-five spaces, obviously we have one hundred and two here, which is more than we need. Based on the existing stores that we have, we have over ninety in our current division in the tri-state area that I mentioned previously, and none of them have issues. We are not permitted to build stores with parking lots that wouldn't be adequate, we don't want our customers to circle, not be able to shop, and then go somewhere else, so, I'm in full agreement with that adequate testimony.
I wanna move over to, this is page six of Ms. Newman's report, item six A, and we're addressing overall operations, and she's the person to do it. Let's see, what about the hours of operation?
So our hours of operation are nine to nine, Monday through Saturday, and nine AM to eight PM on Sundays.
What's the Sunday hours?
Nine AM to eight PM.
Okay.
They request the number of employees.
The number of employees will range from ten to fifteen, depending on the volume of each location.
Is that a number per shift, or is that an overall number?
It's an overall number, the average per shift is anywhere from three to five.
That seems pretty low.
Yeah, so we run a really efficient operation, all the employees, there's no certain kind of job areas for them, every employee from the manager to the cashiers does the stocking to the cashier ringing, and there's just a really efficient way, we don't stock overnight, we just have a kind of simple way of doing things. If you've been in our store, right up the road, you see that, you know, it's low maintenance, low frills, and we just wanna pass all those savings on to the customer, so, that helps us out to retain the best employees and pay them well, and then also not have to have them there long hours more than they're needed.
If I could counsel, just on that, since you raised the subject, is the intent to close the other store?
Yes, so we're in a national upgrade and expansion of our facilities across the entire country, we're adding a lot of new products in that our current square footage wouldn't allow, and also, as you can tell from the elevation, the color rendering, it's a lot different and better looking than the current location, the building alone, we have more energy-efficient standards, and again, the overall size is what we need.
Let's see, do you have any particular constraints on deliveries?
No, so we oversee our own trucking out of the Allentown, Pennsylvania location, so our divisional office and our warehouse is located there, so, we're in control of all of our trucks.
So you wouldn't have a problem putting a stipulation in the resolution that the deliveries would only occur between, and I'll let you fill in the time periods?
Sure, are you looking for, I guess, I guess it's back to what you need, what would you be looking for in this situation to have it during the day and not at night, or, okay, yeah, so we can absolutely work with that.
Well, could you please put the hours on that you would be...
Sure, we would deliver from, I would say, five AM to eight PM. All day.
Could we go a little later in the morning?
Yeah.
Could we go a little later in the morning there?
Six AM? We do get in for stocking at six, so that's when the product needs to be there, and generally, most of our operations in commercial areas, it would happen overnight, so it's waiting for the employees when they do get in at six, but that's when they start their day there, so it's six, six AM work.
And what time would it end?
Eight PM.
Eight PM.
The deliveries would come, as you know, around the back and backing up to that gate on the southerly end, which borders the office building.
Yep, so we have the existing dumpster that's located on the site plan, we also, as a company, we recycle all of our plastic shrink wrap that's wrapped around all of our pallets and all of our cardboard, those are compiled into bales, and they're taken with our trucks as a part of their clean-out back to our divisional warehouse where they're recycled at that point.
And with respect to item G in this same section, the question is whether any warning window banner signs are anticipated?
None.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Yeah, is the store gonna have a generator?
No, it's not part of our prototype to do that.
So if it loses power, eventually you'll lose stock.
So, yeah, we have options, we have dry ice that, contracts that we'll have located in the area, our warehouse can send a refrigerated truck... Yeah, I'm not sure of the specifics of where those security lights would be or what parts would be. Would it be okay to have them all on overnight, for your view?
Did you mean the security lights?
The security lights, yes.
Yeah, I have no problem with the security lights on. I just don't-
I think he's concerned about the lighting in the parking lot.
So, I guess, as you're concerned that it'd be too bright overnight, but you want minimum, just enough, obviously, for the patrols to be, yeah, so we can modify for that. I just don't have a lighting plan.
And that's obviously for the protection of your businesses.
Exactly, and that's why you mentioned we prefer, you know, twenty-four seven if it's okay, but we'll be happy to reduce the security lights.
So we'll make that, Mr. Cucero?
Yes.
Make that part of the resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
Public.
Anybody from the public like to speak, forever? Sign off?
Thank you.
Counselor, you want to summarize? Oh, let's see. Well, we did what we set out to do. We ran into some bumps. I think that we explained ourselves to the extent that we're able, and it remains for you to discuss it and vote on whether our responses are adequate. That's enough. Thank you. Thank you. Motion to approve. I got to ask the board, I mean, we've been lately just granting preliminary, because there are some revisions that have to be made to the plans. How would the board think about we grant preliminary tonight, so that the revisions can be made and then come back to-
I don't know. I think the applicant has indicated that they're willing to making any modifications.
Yeah, and I think that with their professionals, with our professionals, I think this is going to be satisfactory.
Jennifer, are you satisfied with what you've worked out?
With the facades?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
So I'd like a motion for final.
I'll make a motion to approve this project, the new Aldi.
For preliminary and final, with all ancillary relief and the conditions that were expressed on the record.
Yes.
I will second that.
Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Agato?
Yeah, I think it's pretty obvious. I'm going to vote no on this. I understand the layout of the adjacent lots. This is the planning board, and we're supposed to be responsible for what certain areas of the town are going to look like. This is an area of the town that's under extensive development, with everybody and their brother looking at various opportunities for all of these adjacent lots. And to approve this without the required buffer and what we have had numerous conversations about for other applicants in this area relative to parking, just because this is an Aldies today doesn't mean it's going to be an Aldies tomorrow. We saw that, because you got one right across the street that's no longer going to be an Aldies. So, I don't know why we would want to grant any variance for anything in this section of town. So, I would be absolutely opposed to granting the variance, and therefore, I'm against the motion.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
I have to agree with what Mayor Agato said, and I'm going to vote no.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for your consideration. Counselor, any reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chair.
Motion for adjournment. Move.
Aye.
Aye.
adjournment. [inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].